Jamie?
The advice that proper notice has been given by the Township Council in accordance with the Sunshine Law and the following matters. Notice advertised in the Brooklyn County Times and Camden area codes on January 4th, 2019, and posted on the Walton Board on the same date. Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Romando?
Here.
Ms. Correio?
Here.
Mr. Burrell?
Here.
We have some items on our action meeting agenda, and that would be first, approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes for May 14th, 2019, for action work session and closed session.
Submove. Second?
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
I'm standing.
Ms. Correio?
I'm standing.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes for May 28th, 2019, action work session and closed session meeting.
Submove. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Next, I need approval of the minutes for June 22nd public meeting, June 22nd, June 12th, what is it?
Sorry.
12th. Okay. Sorry about that. Just a typo. June 12th, 2019, public meeting.
Submove.
Second. Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have an ordinance on first reading. This is ordinance 2019-11. An ordinance to the Township amending section 2031 entitled Working Conditions of Chapter 20 entitled Administration of Government for the Township by establishing a donated leave program.
Submove.
Oi?
So, as council may recall, this was introduced once previously. The Department of Community Affairs had some additional requests that they made from the Township regarding documentation for implementation purposes. Said documentation has been provided, to the best of my knowledge, correct, Jamie?
Yes.
And we've gotten the green light from the DCA to reintroduce this ordinance.
Submove.
So, Mike was the first one.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have resolutions. First is Resolution 2019-122. This is a resolution authorizing the 2019-2020 liquor license renewals.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Aye. Next is Resolution 2019-123. This is authorizing release of police outside employment escrow for TechnaPro PD 2019-07 in the amount of $1,600.
Submove.
Second. Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Aye. Next is Resolution 2019-124. This is a resolution establishing a change fund for the Uniform Construction Code Department.
Submove. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Aye. Next is Resolution 2019-125 authorizing executive session to discuss the following. This is contract negotiations for the Delrayne Sergeants Association, contract issue regarding medical reimbursement, purchase of a municipal lien. Do I need to put the block and lot in there? For the municipal lien?
Yes.
Block 120, Lot 6. Contract negotiation for potential property acquisition, litigation for affordable housing matters, and potential litigation.
Submove. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Aye. So now, we'll go to our regular agenda for this work session. First is the tax assessor reappointment. She is due to be reappointed, and because her first four-year term as the assessor will expire June 30th, she wishes to continue. We wish to continue her.
Resolution on the public meeting agenda.
I'll make the appointment, you guys.
It's a mayor's appointment with advice and consent.
Okay. So you're gonna make the appointment, correct? And we'll approve that on the public meeting, that'll be the night, July 9th. Next is, once again, the grant for Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Grant. Everyone is familiar with this. And do we need to move forward with this, or just discuss whether we want to move forward with this?
If you can, oh yeah, this is, this would be to give the police the authorization to submit the application, so if we just do a motion?
Right.
Approving it, approving the submission.
This, in essence, gives us police officers for a greatly reduced rate because the grant pays for, what I'm gonna say is about two-thirds, if not more, of the actual contract for their hourly rate.
Motion.
Second. Just do a voice vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You can give police the authorization to do that. Next is the repeal of Chapter 269, Article 2, Section 8 through 13, the registration of rental property. This is, this is a section of our code that we have never done and don't intend to do unless we decide that we would like to start doing it. But it's in there, and it's prudent to remove. Is there any exposure in this kind of?
I can chime in on that, Council President. I've had discussions with the construction official, the recently appointed construction official, and there, to the best of his knowledge, we've viewed the records, this part of Chapter 269 has never previously been implemented. They're at this point just words on paper, and they are essentially redundant unless, as you described, council feels that it's important to implement such provisions. Various registration requirements pertaining to residential units creates a fund for the, for emergency scenarios to correct certain things that are going to be issued by, issued by the construction official. This has been apparently on the books since 1993 and never implemented.
Okay. Okay. So, you know, the, that, as our solicitor just explained, something that, just kind of a cleanup of the code, something that's in there that was never done, we don't intend to do, if we want to do it, we can do it. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
And I can add on that the construction official has advised against the implementation of such a system.
Do you know what? Be aware of it?
It's, essentially, it's onerous. It'll require not just additional involvement from him, which isn't generally within the purview of his generally assigned obligations, it'll also require the appointment and establishment of an advisory body as well. Just an additional layer of administration.
In order to do this, we just need to make a motion, or no?
No formal action needs to be taken. All I need is essentially the consent and structural counsel air, an ordinance draft repealing said article.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? So let's do that. We'll give you the authorization to do that, and bring that back to us, and we'll get rid of it.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Next is, just making sure that there are no additional questions regarding the Delrayne Night Out agreement with Holy Cross to hold Delrayne Night Out there. Basically, the, this is a cookie cutter agreement. The issues that have been discussed and that were negotiated were that they would, in essence, be handling and collecting the money for the VIP parking on their parking lot. The event, in its entirety, would be held on their property, and it would be the parking lot. We would promote it by way of having a link on the website. They would collect the money. We don't touch any of the money. We don't administer the parking fees, and they would collect that money with the potential to make, you know, I don't know if they've set a number, but it's $10 a car is what was discussed. Could be, you know, upwards of 300 cars, maybe more if they used additional lot, or it could be less. There's no guarantees, and they're aware of that, but that would be, that risk would be theirs and not ours, and they would, they would do that, and that would, they would do that in lieu of us paying them any rental fee for the property.
I think, I'm gonna just, I want to ask the other question, but wasn't there a concern that we were gonna talk to them about getting some of those 300 to be handicap?
Yeah, we spoke to them the other day, yesterday, and they're, we're gonna work on determining handicap spots.
So they will?
Yeah, we're gonna figure out some spots, additional spots.
I think they, I think what I've, what I've heard is that they, well, I'm not involved in what, you have better indication.
Yeah.
You said that they're discussing it.
Yep.
That's fine.
They will, 'cause I, I know.
Yeah, they don't have any.
Because there wasn't many that they had, I think, marked, so.
So, and then the thing is, and we would pay for the quarter bodies anyway, is that they have a contractor that they use, that they have an agreement with, and they've asked us to just use that contractor, and that the contractor will send us, send them a bill, and they even send it to us.
Yeah, it's actually cheaper to use their contractor.
Really?
Yeah.
It's good, his or her name.
Yeah, exactly.
The rest is standard agreement? You have any issues with this?
So, from a legal standpoint, we were, our firm was not directly involved with the drafting and negotiation of the substantive terms of this agreement. So, so long as council has reviewed the agreement and the substantive terms that have been just generally broad strokes laid out as described by Council President, meaning payment of quarter bodies, the reimbursement procedures established for Holy Cross, the agreement is as described, boilerplate, but it's boilerplate in the sense, in the traditional sense of the term, that if the township has such a boilerplate agreement, which we do for certain situations, meaning we transfer all of the risk as the liability, as the negligence, as the personal injury and property damage is transferred to us as the party utilizing the other entities' real estate in this situation and utility and facilities. So, so long as council has been made aware of that, this is one of those essentially contracts of adhesions. I believe it's a take it or leave it on those liability issues. So long as the joint insurance fund has been consulted, and we have something in writing from them via email saying that they are comfortable with the carve-outs and the transfer of liability as described, and we have adequate coverage according to them, I don't see an issue from a legal standpoint with placing this on an agenda to be a resolution to be authorized for execution.
Again, I briefly talked with Jeff and asked if he had any problems with this agreement specifically, and that, that he didn't, he didn't indicate any, any problems with it.
I think, I think I would like you guys to at least look it over, to make sure that we're covered 100 percent. I mean, I'm not covered 100 percent that Jeff is gonna be okay with it and everything's okay with it.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff was in the meeting, read over it, and the REC wants this approved as quick as possible so we can start advertising. We met with these guys two and a half weeks ago.
Right.
So the sooner the better. I urge council.
No, I understand that.
Jeff was okay with it. He spoke multiple times. He's working with the Diocese to get all their paperwork. We need this to move forward. We haven't publicly announced anything until this is signed. Jeff was gonna sign it in the meeting, but we, you know, talked about, let's wait till council and mayor.
So Jeff felt that he didn't care about?
Jeff, Jeff said he would sign it right there, but just procedurally, we wanted to have council bless it.
And we did review it, and I just laid out, council think, the identification provisions heavily favor Holy Cross, and I would just make sure that the adequate insurance coverage is provided for the best balance.
As long as you saw it and you pointed out, you knew enough.
Oh, it would be no different if we were having the event on town property, we would still have the same liability.
Correct. With certain carve-outs for certain rights, such as last year, mechanical pull, we implemented a form waiver that people were required, so we did have some additional layers of protection, and I don't know to what extent the township plans on utilizing the same forms this year around, depending on what kind of activities are taking place.
I see. Thank you.
Good. So now, are you saying this needs action?
Yes, please.
So, is the action to authorize Jeff to sign this?
Yeah, or the mayor's office, anybody. So we can, we'd like to start advertising, start promoting the event.
As long as you can.
Yeah.
Is this something we can, how would we do that here? Just a motion?
It would be, it should be done by way of resolution, which Jamie, I believe, can assign a number, and then form can be provided later as an administrative matter. Again, the only condition I would suggest procedurally before formal action is taken is consultation and something in writing in the joint insurance fund. But as to the agreement itself, it stands as it is.
Well, but if we, can we do a resolution with the?
Subject to review as the form and approval by solicitors on this?
To approval by, by the joint insurance fund?
Correct.
Right. Because if Jeff was, you know, you know Jeff with insurance, if Jeff was ready to sign it, my guess is that, that he, he felt that the joint insurance fund wouldn't have any issues with this.
I agree.
So, so I'm gonna suggest that we do a resolution that is contingent on the joint insurance fund, you know, providing the appropriate insurance as described here and not having any direct issues. Other than that, you know, I know that we're, we're the runway to get there. It's a big event, lots to do, and lots of people to entice to, to enjoy, so.
So who's, who's signing it?
Who will somebody? It'll be me once. Yeah, I mean, I would want, I would want that Jeff, that Jeff's, you know, paperwork, that's all.
Okay.
I mean, you can do that, just stay pending, and as long as we have that paperwork, no problem.
Okay. Just authorizing there. It's 2019-126.
Authorizing the mayor to sign this agreement pending, pending approval from Jeff. All right, so I'd like a motion to approve Resolution 2019-126 to authorize the mayor to sign this facilities rental agreement pending with the contingency that it is, it is approved by the joint insurance fund.
Submove. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchman?
Aye. So.
Jamie, go.
So, so we received this a while back. There was a, it was a suggestion that we had $50,000 sitting around with nothing to do, and that Jeff issued us a memo in May, on the 14th, indicating that, you know, the be-all and end-all was that the short answer is that there's no money that can be moved from that source. It was suggested that we had $50,000 set aside for the Army Corps of Engineers to be a potential incentive for them to consider doing the project. It was actually a requirement of theirs, and we said, well, if they do it, then we, here's the money, and we put it in, but we never actually generated the money or borrowed the money to do it. It was just, it was just kind of on paper, and that is long since passed. Jeff has, has found some money in a bond ordinance from 2018 that he's indicated that we could potentially use as a starter balance of about $5,400 to get this, the Jake's Place funding finished off. So, I mean, that's really where we are, unless somebody has, there's, they're saying that there's about $70,000 that they still want to fundraise. We're saying, great, go right ahead, and they've asked us, is there anything the township can do? And if Jeff found this, this has absolutely no impact on anything, other than it would be money that was already set aside for something in a bond ordinance that would, that is transferable. So, I guess what we're asking here is whether we're going, we want to use that $5,400 to move to the Jake's Place fund. I think we talked about this before. I'm not sure, are we, are we supposed to take action, is that why? We discussed it and thought about it, but that seems to be all that Jeff could find. Of course, Jeff is in a rehabilitation state right now. But I think that's, is that, is that, your understanding is what?
We don't want to take any action tonight, but I'm not sure whether it requires a reappropriation in organs or whether it's arguing states parks. But, either way, we want to take any action until the next meeting, but, and then the other question was, you know, do you want to?
So, so that, those are the two questions. Are, is everybody comfortable in using that money for that?
I just have one question on it.
Yeah.
They want to raise $70,000.
Yeah.
What if they don't get there? Does our money go in the end? Ying?
Yeah, I don't think it transfers to them. This has to be used for the.
Yeah, it would sit on your books.
Okay.
You don't have to.
Yeah, here's, here's $5,400, you know, put some red in the thermometer.
Right.
To the goal.
Got it.
And then, when you get there, we'll hand it to you, but use that as a base.
Yeah, kind of like the fundraising efforts for the first round. You know, there's money, there's some township pot money, Jake's Place pot, and in the end, you gotta figure out how to spend it.
Okay.
Per proper procedures.
Right.
Yeah, then I'm okay with it.
And, and then the, the question that begs to be asked is, do we want to put any more in that, or just stick with this?
For this budget, this is where we stand right now.
Okay. Okay. All right, so, let's do that, put that on the, however it's appropriate for the next, for the public meeting in July, which again, it'll be July 9.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah, and that's also the grand opening.
Not as I meant.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll be, that'll be, we'll be, we'll be meeting, that seems like a good time to remind everybody that the grand opening for Jake's Place will be that evening. I think the actual, not to get off track with this issue on Jake's Place, their advertising at is 5:00. Everybody was told that the actual, you know, ribbon cutting and speeches or whatever would be at 5:30, but they're, they're calling the event for 5:00. I guess they're, they're hiring entertainment? Is that what's going on?
I have no idea.
They said there's probably music.
I know they're doing a bunch of stuff, I don't mean it.
Right.
This week, the REC is not really involved with it.
Right.
I mean, I know what they told us in email, but.
Right. So, I'm just saying that it's close to 5:00 for all of us to be there and any invited electives or whoever. They're, they're handling it, so there you go. Next is the capital budget. So, the answer is, this is a tricky question. You know, I don't know that Jeff has, has given us the definitive answer yet.
Yeah, I don't think he has. I'm still hesitant.
His memo kind of says, you know, things are flux and that, you know, each, he kind of gave us the basics again, but didn't really tell us what the impact would be if we were to do everything or part of it, and I don't know, do we need to make this, I don't think that we need to make this decision tonight, do we?
Well, I mean.
I think we should wait for, since they're consulting, I guess, to provide a grant, says they're working with a consulting firm to determine the impact moving forward if we went with everything. Assuming their phone.
Well, that's, that's reviewing our current debt. It's not necessarily a way for this, but I think it does say, you know, that $10,667 for each of the 15 years, that's if you borrow $100,000. It's obviously, it's not $155,700.
So it would be $10,000 times nine and a half. Submove. Debt service.
Yeah, I think that's the question, is how, what impact does next year?
Right.
Or years after?
Right. So I think, I think we need to revisit these, these questions, and they're, they're, this is kind of a, now it becomes, you know, one from column A and one from column B, so we get to a palatable number, and what is that number?
That's the question. I mean, are we waiting to get? I thought that's what we were waiting, was for him to provide us with. I understand that $100,000 gives us about 10 and a half, but, for each year, but how does that impact us at the bottom line? I think that was the question.
Right.
So, we, I don't think we have an answer currently.
I, we don't.
So, I mean, I don't think we can make a decision unless we, we know how it's gonna impact. We can start slicing that down in half, but then, we, we don't know what we're targeting to try and hit.
Right, right. The, you know, good choice of words. The target's moving, and, and, you know, our, our range of fire is moving at the same time, so maybe we need to, to, like, we need to do that, because it's gonna be a month.
Well, it'd be at least three months away for capital.
That's where we are.
General capital or sewer?
General.
Sewer's not on here.
Yeah, I talked to Jeff today about sewer, and we were bad projects, and I think it probably won't be this year, but when the fall comes around, I'm sure by next year, it might be.
Right, so I, I think we need, we just don't have all the numbers to crunch.
What exactly are you looking for? The actual, like, tax impact?
So, we need to, yeah, like, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to get the current status of surplus, so we understand where we are and what impact it would have in next year's budget, and what can be offset. My understanding, surplus grew again this year. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we've done a couple of things to, to put the brakes on that growth a little bit, and, and, knock wood, it keeps growing. So, you know, maybe that will determine how much we can use from that, and how much we can use, you know, what the, what the applicable tax impact would be, but we just don't have the numbers, so, so I'd like, since we do have a month, and hopefully Jeff will be here, he sounds much better, but he, he can't get a card yet, so we're just gonna have to table making any, any decisions on the capital budget until the next work session. So let's do that. Do we need to?
No.
Just a quick update on the Baldwin Tower, which I thought I brought something to the, I think I left it in my office.
Jerry said, he sent, I'm at home.
So Jerry has indicated that if we see the, you know, air conditioning system being a potential project in the future, that he thinks it should last at least two more years, and, you know, and even if we need repairs in that two years, he feels that it can be repaired.
Yeah, I saw him at the Green Team thing last night, and he said the exact same thing.
Yeah, well, whatever he's doing, it seems to be working right now.
The way he goes right now, it sounds like 10.
But I think that was, as long as, you know, we're looking.
Yeah, he feels that he said it's not compatible with.
Not gonna have any usefulness for any new year.
Yeah, there's nothing.
If we needed service, we have somebody that can service it?
He feels that it can be repaired, yes.
Does he have somebody?
And that would have no significant impact on the air conditioning.
Can you just have him before he does leave, press the word on, and he'll know sort of fact who he thinks will be able to do the repair, so he can do that?
So we, I mean, if you're okay, we'll take that item off, and then we'll move forward the rest of them, try, try to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would all like, all of them to be done, that's why, why they're on the budget, but, you know, they just gotta know, you know, what impact, if we're going crazy or going under what we normally do.
Okay.
Thank you.
I didn't write down the, the, it's just the revision. I read through it, but I don't know which one it's from.
Yeah, this is the one that Allen's office.
This is the one with the pink.
As council may recall, the Chicken Ordinance Advisory Committee.
Do I need to say, we're on the Chicken Ordinance Advisory Committee program?
If it wasn't for the seven on the agenda. They provided two forms, one was a form of proposed changes, the other one's the ordinance slash code chapter in its current form. We have combined the two into a comprehensive ordinance draft for the council to review, with every proposed change evaluated, incorporated and comments, I don't know, by myself in our office, regarding what we think the implications are, what we suggest, what we think is a hundred percent acceptable as proposed by, uh, the Chicken Ordinance Committee and what we think should be rejected. So to the extent there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Sure, it was 2017, I think that's what it was.
Yeah, so, so far we have licenses out for 2012.
Right, okay, so, so, uh, you're saying in, in 389-2, that you didn't like the language, you felt it undermined the regulations if we spelled it out, and 2000, or 389-12, correct? So, um, that's what, that's why you make the big bucks? It's your job to, to keep those in check. And I don't know that I had any other, my notes. We have the current limit of licenses at?
Twenty.
Twenty. And they, they were looking at increasing the limit in chickens, or four to eight.
Full disclosure, my girlfriend's mom has chickens, you'll never know they're there.
Yeah.
She's got 12 now. No roosters, no, no, no. But, you really, two or five or 10.
That's a matter.
It's really.
That's the roosters.
Yeah, no roosters with a row of them.
If you have a cat next door.
Or a hawk.
There's a, or a hawk, you're right.
This, this chicken ordinance, it's tough to get, you gotta go to a class, it's a long class, you gotta really be dedicated, they scare you in the class, right, no reasons why not.
So if you have the chickens, you definitely not just.
Yeah, you can't just show up, you know, one Saturday and decide you're gonna raise chickens.
I'd be scared that they tell them chickens of all from velociraptors, they're some vicious beasts.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, I mean, it is a lot of work, so.
Yeah.
And we are nowhere near the 20 licenses, we're in like the six, six to seven.
Well, that tells me that the.
So, so I know that if we do go up to from four to eight, then we gotta look at the size bit, right, of the coop.
That is a policy decision, Mr. Mayor. If you believe so, or if you're professionals, you're engineer beliefs.
Too, I mean, I know that I saw you talk about that, and that's why I was like.
Well, the, the good news is, uh, in, um, chicken engineering, uh, the good news is the, the ordinance says coop shall be at least two square feet per chicken.
Right.
So, uh, at.
It would be larger.
At eight, it would be 16 square feet, and the maximum would need to be adjusted, because the maximum coop size is, I've never said that coop size, I like that, is 100 square feet. So, you know, I, I think if, if there's minimal impact, um, and the language is correct, I noticed you're changing the, um, team. So what, give us your insight on the, on the, itself as a team that doesn't hold meetings.
So, their proposal was essentially the advisory body that exists right now to transform it into a team, and by way of ordinance, name the actual individuals who are members of that team. I advise against that, I would prefer to more as an advisory board, certain enforcement powers basically as it exists right now. One of the ambiguities in the ordinance previously that existed was whether or not the meetings of this advisory body, whether they be subject to open, I suggest that they be a subject to open, the Open Public Meeting of Meetings Act for transparency purposes, because while it's predominantly, the advisory board's powers are advisory in a sense, meaning they make recommendations to this council as to enforcement issues concerning the keeping of chickens. They do have some affirmative action they can take on their own, such as the educational courses they provide and the like. So, um, would just be like the RAC?
Yeah.
Are we, is, do we have a consensus on whether to permit four versus, are we incre, are we increasing to eight or are we?
Well, I mean, the other, the other thing is, I mean, they, they wanna increase to eight, but at the same time, they wanna reduce the square foot, the square foot is one three two.
Can that be as the minimum, in my experience? But people who do this, they, I think, I think Patty said, most of the people who have application, or permits, they're much bigger than the minimum.
Yeah, I was gonna tell you, I have birds, I mean, I have like parrots, but I'm just gonna tell you, two square feet for a bird is kinda very small.
You know, most people don't do the minimum.
So then why would they want the minimum?
You just, so you have something to, to have some sort of tier doing it.
And, they're not in the coop.
The whole time.
The whole time, and I used to have chickens when I lived in Winslow. In the wintertime, you don't want it real big, because they'll actually huddle in to keep warm next to each other in the wintertime, and I actually used to take some insulation, the hard foam stuff, and insulate the inside of the coop in the winter, 'cause I'm just a responsible chicken owner.
Why didn't you bring one in here?
Well, no, I tried to lie there.
Chicken owner, not the crazy chicken lady.
I wanted a house when it was time to eat, but. And he's acting chef, so, two square feet seems to be fine, you know, I, um, they're recommending, I don't know, I didn't take any lessons, I don't, I've never had or raised chickens.
And they can, as many chickens as they want, if you ask me.
No, I think there should be a limit.
Yeah.
So, we would say that they, that they must have, they must have, they would stay as, so, we wanna keep, we don't wanna remove the, uh, holding meetings portion of the program? We wanna keep it that they have to hold meetings?
I, I presume that they've been holding meetings to begin with, uh, my suggestion was that the ordinance was previously unclear as to whether those meetings were subject to the Open Public Meetings Act, and I advise that it should be subject to that publication such as, for a special meeting, that this government body would have, that, that publication be required. Janie, this draft that I provided, was it forwarded to the Chicken Advisory Committee for their comment? Did they have any pushback as to my concerns, suggestions, revisions?
I actually thought they were gonna be, as a representative, it's gonna be for tonight, but.
No com, so no comment from them whatsoever? And, and it's their proposal to change the name from a board to a team, that could just be a layperson's interpretation of the ordinance, it might not be actually a substantive disagreement between myself, whoever proposes changes, I don't, I'm not sure who their actual representative is, but.
I don't think they have an actual representative.
It was Patty.
Sorry.
Patty was the liaison.
Right.
You wanna be known, since you have family that have birds?
You have the experience.
Yeah, yeah. Tom?
More than that, we're gonna do.
So, so, maybe what we'll do is, is, uh, since they've had no response, no reaction, and no comment here tonight, then we move forward, we keep it as a meeting that's, that has operable minutes?
Correct.
Right, and, um, they, do they be published?
Yes.
Somewhere, and what would that be, on our website, on our website?
So the publication would be pursuant to open guidelines, which is, uh, two newspapers that circulate. The same requirements as the government body part of it. Yeah, and did we make a policy decision on the three outstanding questions, which is, uh, the current limit being 20 licenses, are we removing, are we consenting to the removal of that limit?
Yeah.
How did we have that?
Six.
Why is?
They're anticipating, I guess, aggressive.
I guess they wanna promote it and get more people.
I'll tell you, if everyone had chickens in their backyard, they'd give it to mosquitoes and the whole line, I'm telling you, ticks. The best thing you ever do, you wanna eat ticks, love ticks. They eat ticks all the bucket of money.
I didn't know that.
Really?
Do you have a bird on it?
That's bad.
Why do you think they put guinea heads in the state parks, eat ticks? Really? Sorry, I'm over the line.
Okay.
Should we swear a minute while I was at iceberg at this?
I wanna pay with a joint draw, it's a joint draw.
All right, so we're getting a little off track. Tommy gave a little bit, love that.
So, so, I, I don't know, do, I don't think we need, do we need to limit it if we get?
No.
20 licenses and?
I suppose if it got out of hands for some reason, somehow, we could always revisit the issue.
And that's where we had the pilot, there was no issue with the pilot.
Yeah, yeah, we've had, we've had zero complaints.
We have complaints about dogs, cats, sorts of things.
So, um, we could, you know, we can make, we can double it, make it 40 now, or we could just take the limit off.
Just, just.
Take it off?
Yep.
Take it off, take it off, take it off.
Yeah, always.
Take it off.
Yeah.
Always put a bag on it.
And, and the four to eight increase in terms of the number of chickens allowed?
I think you're fine with that.
That's, that's okay, and I believe the final question is again, the production, the final question, I promise factual question, that they propose is the production from three square feet to two square feet.
It seems to make sense according to our non-technical experts. Whether it's two or three, if they're cold, they're gonna huddle together.
Right.
But what you do is, there's, you're gonna retain more heat in a smaller area.
Yeah, yeah.
The body.
Yeah.
Yeah, not that I slept in there. So, you know, the, the Chicken Advisory Board is making the suggestion.
Correct.
We would, we would only assume that the suggestion would be to improve the conditions for, for the people and the chickens. So, you know, what, what, for what we know, other than some of you, why not? I mean, this is not a why question, I think this is more of a why not, why not do it if that's what they're recommending?
Again, we don't have any opposition to that at all here, as you see here, so I have no reason to say that that's not an okay thing to do, so.
And, and even though, um, Tyler has knowledge that they're great, we also have a veterinarian that's on the Chicken Advisory Board, so I'm sure she is not going to make the recommendation that would be hurtful to the chickens, you know? If they needed three feet, I'm sure we'd know.
Are there any more chicken questions? I will incorporate the revisions and I'll be ready for introduction at the next meeting.
Great, and that'll give them, still give them plenty of opportunity to do their thing. So, uh, before we go into closed session, and we have quite an extensive closed session this evening, we'll go around the room with reports, you have anything, Janie, anything tonight, Jeff?
Yes, I talked to Jeff Baptist today, the road program, we wanna advertise it in the paper next week and have it ready for an award, or receipt bids the morning of the workshop in July, which is the fourth Tuesday, for discussion that night, and then potential award, the public meeting in August. Usually, it's a little awkward doing it this way, just because of our public meeting, our workshop schedule is not until August, we probably have plans for you to review before then, but I reviewed with Jeff, we're, we should be good with the budget. It's looking good with the budget to get all the deletion items done, because we had, we were planning to do some full reconstruction of a portion of River Drive, which we probably won't have to, and working with the Brooklyn Bridge Commission, well, Brooklyn County, with some of the work that they're taking over for us, kind of things that cost a lot of information, but, so, um, yeah, so we're looking to award it, have the bid, bid period in July. Okay, Jake's Place, um, it should be all done by July 4th, which is a long time, in time for the opening. There's like the last few minutes, last few items, there's a fence that has to go in, some grading, and, um, the final servicing, so that's all, we have dates confirmed for all those final items.
But it's still wrapped up?
Yeah. Yeah, we're ready to go. Last meeting, first workshop I was here, we talked about the DOT grants that are due. So just to recap, the municipal aid grant, there's three grants, municipal, bike way, and safe streets of transit. The municipal is gonna be Conroe, our second phase of Conroe. The bike way is going to be the trails connecting and footbridge connecting Delaware and Community Park and Notre Dame Park. I think that's where you agreed on, and then there was a question on the safe streets of transit. We just got $250,000 to put in those flashing beacons within the crosswalk or pedestrian signals. We did some more research, and the question was last time, was we're gonna add that to the actual s, street intersections? We would not be able to do that, they're not permitted at traffic signals, like, at those street intersections, and in fact, to use the money for, that we just got, we'd actually have to change the signal type for the pedestrian only crossings. So, bottom line is, the idea to put, cause we only applied for two of the pedestrian crossings for those in pavement beacons.
This was, this was the 21130?
Yes.
Yeah.
The other question was, can we, can we use that same technology at the, all the other street intersections? And we can't, so we had to come up with a different project, and.
But we can still use it, the one that we got for at least the ones that.
For the pedestrian signal, we can, but we have to change the signal type. It's, it's gonna, we have to go away from a traditional traffic signal to more of like a pedestrian crossing. But it's still, what's that?
That's in the budget, where have we got it?
Uh, yeah, we got like 250,000.
That's approved, we're going to.
That should cover.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we still gotta go through the legwork with that, I mean, we have that grant, that's, you know, how we apply that money, we still have to go through the details with local aid and permitting, but what I'm saying is our next grant, we shouldn't apply for the other three traffic, uh, vehicle, street intersections.
Right, and he asked a good question, that 250 is gonna cover the two that, all that that we're gonna do for those two. And if not, then maybe we wanna apply for additional to cover it so it doesn't cost, and that's where I think you were at this time.
It's a good amount of money just for a pedestrian signal, um, I can say we can at least get one. I mean, I, I don't, I would not wanna commit a grant application to cover any costs that we can't use up, nor any of those signals. Um, what we talked about kinda is also, we do need some more sidewalks, we figured out, cause with your affordable housing, um, efforts, there's a development potentially going in at the Holy Cross in Chester, and for Home Depot, and both of them need sidewalks to connect them to kind of like the rest of the built up portions of Route 130. And there's five out parcels over here in Chester, uh, that need sidewalk in front of it, that would connect the main entrance for the Holy Cross development to the shopping plaza, and then the Route 130 and all the sidewalks and bus stops.
So for the second grant that you wanna go for, can we put in both the additional that we would need for the light plus the sidewalk?
I can put it part of the scope to keep our options open, but, yeah, I guess that, that is potentially possible.
Only because I'd like to try to get the grant to cover the lights, and then whatever we can get out of the sidewalk would be the way to go.
That's the option.
So, so, let, let's be clear about where we are and what we're doing. So we had, we have the 250 kind of in our pocket, we had looked at putting the fancy lights in, and what we need to do, we need to do a pedestrian signal.
Correct.
And the pedestrian signal in two locations, along with the flashing lights, could potentially be over the 250.
It's hard to say, uh, yeah, I, potentially, yeah, I mean, I don't want to put it in.
Is it gonna be like 260, or is it gonna be 400? I guess that would determine whether we wanna go with another grant for that, or we wanna just kind of.
I, 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 I like the mayor's suggestion where you apply for the sidewalks and, and include like, that scope of work with changing out those two pedestrian signals as well, and it keeps your options open. You can always apply for more and not, and not use it all, and not do the entire scope, but to, to change the scope, to add in more, after the fact is, is up and popping up.
Yeah, Jim, can I ask you a quick question? The develop, the sidewalks, we couldn't make developer do that, right?
So typically with affordable housing projects, typically with affordable housing projects, they argue against doing anything offsite, which is not a long in their frontage, because, um, any, it's, it's, there's like, certain laws out there, which, you know, that's kind of allow them to only really do what's absolutely necessary for the development, and anything offsite is usually typically deferred to the township or other.
And that's why.
And that's why the side, the side, you're gonna be seeing an ordinance pretty soon for the Holy Cross development, the zoning ordinance. There's language in there, but it's just draft at this point, and we've already seen some comments back from the, uh, potential, I don't know how much of this is from public meeting right now, but, uh, but yeah, typically, I mean, if we could come up with a funding source for this sidewalk that's needed on Chester, uh, through the grant, I think it's a, uh, it's, it's a good thing. And if we leave our options open to have any, to not, not do the sidewalk, and then have the extra, and money for the traffic signals, we do that, that makes sense.
Alright.
Yeah, so, and so the, the grant would be titled something like pedestrian sidewalk, pedestrian sidewalk and traffic signal.
Correct.
We'll tie it with Holy Cross, at that signal, we'll commit, like, you know, we'll tie it to the pedestrian signal in front of Holy Cross, and with the sidewalk along the other front.
If we can get that, that'd be a good thing. For that part.
Jim, when can we expect the improvements to 130? Is that like?
Oh, it's gonna be. For, for the actual pedestrian?
Yeah.
That's gonna be at least like a year or two, like, you, you have to still have to budget it, because it's a reimbursable grant. So we're, you're not gonna see until a minimum of 2019 budget, uh, and then once we go through. The 20, I'm sorry. And, uh, you know, you'll see the 2020 budget, and then by the time we get the design and permitting, you're looking at like 2021's, uh, construction cycle.
When will we hear on that grant, any idea?
Um, I think they're being, I think they wanna get it out before election day. Wonder why?
Cool, all the better.
So you'll have resolutions on for these three grants for the night?
Okay.
The applications are due like a week later. I just need to know now that, that's where you're going, because it takes, let's put it to length.
So, so last question, unless it comes on a set of questions, um, you're, you're putting out the road program bids, you'll pull them in the morning of, that'll give you enough time to slap them together?
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna be looking for you to award at the workshop.
But you'll have the, you'll have.
We'll, we'll know when the prices came in and that, you know, who we're leaning towards the recommendation of award and having.
I'm not as much concerned about us being able to absorb it and digest it, I'm more concerned, are you gonna be able to?
I, I won't come, I probably won't come into the meeting with our actual letter of report of award, but I can tell you that this is probably who we're gonna award to, and in our letter of public the next day.
Catch it.
You know, and why, as we do the final eye dial with T. Frost, but we just wanna maximize this. But we just want to maximize the spacing from having it between discussing with you and it being in the paper to give it the most competitive price possible. Because you got July fourth in there too.
Gotcha.
Okay. It's a summer.
Good. Any other questions for Jim?
Thanks, Jim.
Not yet, you're not good. Alan, anything from legal?
I'll send a report tonight.
Good for you. Tom, anything tonight?
Just the situation in Summer Hill on the Ashtray Court.
We're going to talk about.
Yeah, I know.
Getting close.
I'm just monitoring, yeah.
Right?
Yeah. No, I know, I know that, I just staying, I'm staying on it.
Okay. Okay, Tyler, anything?
No report.
Virginia?
Michael?
No report.
And all five of the kind, I'm going to have no report this evening. We have lots to do. Close, Ken, any?
I just have one thing. We do have our next meeting this Thursday with the River Coalition. We do have nine towns that have joined, which are expecting another two to four. So far we've had great response and this next meeting, we're going to be asking for the issues of all the towns and basically going over and having their engineers give recommendations for their issues and we're going to group it together and come up with the big hitters and attack those. Thank you.
Yeah, Thursday at six.
We'll update you.
With it.
So you want to be at the special meeting?
No.
Just wanted to make sure that I had my schedule straight. Okay, so.
That's, that's before it, anyhow, but I.
It's at seven, isn't it?
As far as it says.
Oh, oh, yours is at six. Oh, I'm sure. Plenty, where's it seven?
At the time we get done.
Is that here?
Yes.
This room?
Yes.
Oh, oh.
We should be out of here.
Oh, you're in the safe room.
And worst case, we can always move to.
It's a special meeting. It's for, Mika's going to be here. We have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have to review the. Plan and the agreement. Okay, so I'll open it up.